It is time to call to order our regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village School Board of Education. We'll call please. Chen Carrier?
Here.
Iden?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Lothar?
Here.
And Benner?
Yes, here.
And welcome to all visitors, thank you for being here and please stand for your questions.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Hayes, I believe you have a presentation for us.
Thank you, I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to meet her, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Ork. She is our marketing manager in our office. She comes over and usually Tuesdays, goes to Hicksville Rotary and also does retention calls and so forth here in the community. But the purpose of our visit tonight is to submit to the Board of Education an application for Ohio Enterprise Zone Agreement on behalf of Gordon Creek Granite LLC. Gordon Creek Granite is proposing an expansion at their 604 Industrial Drive location, namely an 18,000 square foot building addition and the purchase of some additional equipment. Total investment in the project is $760,000, made up of $515,000 estimated cost on the building addition, $185,000 investment in machinery and equipment, and $25,000 in furniture and fixtures, making a total of $760,000. Gordon Creek proposes to hire four additional full-time employees and currently, before that hiring, they have 18 full-time employees in Ohio. The four new jobs are proposed to create an additional $120,000 in annual payroll in the community and Gordon Creek is seeking a 70% tax exemption on the real property additions only for a term of 10 years. We missed your timeline for the November meeting by one day last month, so we have already taken this to Hicksville Village Council and Council did pass a Council Resolution of Support for the project. So if the Board wishes, we would seek a resolution from the Board simply supporting this. This application does not include any specific pilots or payments in lieu of taxes to the school board, but it is only for 70%, so there would be additional taxes coming to the school district from the 30% that will remain taxable. Should I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the technology report.
Well, it's been a very long time, it's good to see you all finally here this evening. We've got a couple items to talk to you about tonight. We're starting an initiative with Chromebooks, well pilot program for fifth grade students and they are a small group of 57 students, so we're just going to give Chromebooks to give it a try and see how it works. This was at the request of fifth grade teachers, they've been asking for multiple years and we're using the combination of district funds as well as school foundations monies to make this happen. The wonderful thing about Chromebooks, I think Mrs. Ozor will be able to speak to it a little bit, Brian, because they've done it as well, the cost per unit is quite lucrative compared to the cost of an Apple product. It doesn't cost the district near as much and it gives most of the same function. I wouldn't say they're on equal playing fields, it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges, but they're both inside the fruit category. A mild pun intended there. But we're going to try it in fifth grade, see how well it works, if it meets the needs for our district, we may seriously look at going in that direction for some of the major purchases in elementary building. The students, I'd give you a great report on how they're doing, but they just got them Thursday, so it's pretty new, it's pretty fresh. The good thing I can tell you is the machines came in the door on Monday, I wasn't here on Monday, but by Wednesday, beginning of the day, fifth grade teachers came in, they assisted me in the setup and making it all happen and by Thursday morning it was in the students' hands. So the setup and moving forward was really, really fast-paced, I was pleased, very pleased. Good kudos to the fifth grade teachers who've come down and helped with that. Also, over Christmas break, Current Office Solutions will be out to refresh our aging copy and printer fleets. Most of our current fleet is over five years old in copy and printing terms, that's a pretty old unit and you can say this year I've made a lot more phone calls to Current Office to help out with some of our equipment. The past year or two, they've come out with a couple used pieces of equipment to replace some of the copy machines because we run a lot of copies. Mrs. Jones can recall that from her years working inside the district, we run a lot of copies. Having that said though, we're always looking for ways to continue to lower our costs and kind of rein that in and that's been one of the things that Mr. Countryman has put forefront this year, was let's cut those copy costs down and let's cut the number of copies down. So one of the things the tech department's doing is any of the colored units that are coming in the door, we're going to have two printers that are going to show up on the list and as a teacher or a student, they're going to choose which form they want. Even though it's going to the same machine, the settings will say it's only going to print black and white or it's only going to print color. So you have to be a little more proactive, I guess, not proactive, I thought the word was important, but more intentional if you want to print color, so the color printing job just coming into the machine. If you choose a black and white printer when you print, you're only going to get a black and white copy. So that's one of them, so we're trying the sheriff to help out and keep costs down. Those are the two major things that's going on in the question, any questions, comments?
Chromebooks, do they stay here?
Yes, Chromebooks do not leave, similar to the lab settings that we have, the rolling carts, they're going to stay in the classrooms, but the students will, like our sixth grade class, it is assigned to the child and the child will take it from class to class with them. But it's not something that's going to go home like we're doing in high school junior high. Other questions?
I'd just like to add that Current Office is people that we've always done our work with, with the copy machines and printers and they are phenomenal at work and they always give us a great price.
Very good deals, the service is outstanding.
Not just with those things, but anything else that we can get from Current Office, our teacher supplies and things in the spring that are very easy to work with and very accommodating, so a great company.
What's the difference in the price between an Apple and a Chromebook? Well, that's a real good question, Mr. Iden. I have approximately $200 in each one of these units, that does not include a bag. An Apple product for a student is anywhere between 800 and 900 depending on what the options and specs you get, but they're really two major different things. The laptop, everything is self-contained inside the unit, you have the hard drive you're working from. If you have a network drop, most of the time the things you're working on is not going to be affected. With the Chromebooks, it relies a lot more heavily on our investment in our wireless situation where you're working on things here, but at the same time it's being synchronized back and forth with the cloud. So there is the ability of working on it, but you've got to kind of check the files out, take them offline in a situation where if a child did want to take it home and they didn't have internet, it doesn't work nearly as well as a laptop that would have all the items right here self-contained. So there's some give and take, the hardware is, it's a $200 piece of hardware compared to an $800, $900 piece of hardware. It's just apples and oranges, but they both do a similar thing and after talking to many of the tech coordinators locally and then talking to staff members who were wanting to pilot this, I said, "What do you need?", and they listed off the things and they matched up very well with what the Chromebook.
Are you, are you teaching them about Google and sharing on Google Docs?
Yes, we've actually, this year we've had John Mansell Play-Doh from Newwark come out many times and in our first opening sessions, John and Chris from Newwark came out and gave a real good explanation of what classroom is, how you can use sheets and all the Google products and I've had quite a few teachers that really latched on to that and taken that to the next level. We started, I think it was over a year ago, when we switched to Google Mail and that helped us get our accounts set up and all those kinds of pieces. This is just the next logical step to add this, it wasn't possible at this point.
Can we start with the production of the printers, they don't even talk about that until after here?
I think we're this, this is this. December.
Okay. I was wondering how it's going to go over.
Yeah.
But you were expecting to save, I mean considerable amount?
They'll save approximately $30,000 off the top and then there'll be a cost in savings in the amount of printing, that's a little harder to estimate. But you know, as Matt said, from the beginning of the year, you know, one of the pushes we've really tried to do since we have all these laptops and everything, let's, let's try to utilize the electronic version as opposed to printing it out. So you know, like my newsletters, for example, is a good example. You don't need to print the newsletter out to read it, just read it on the computer and delete it when you're done. And same way with a lot of assignments, to get that going back and forth with teachers electronically as opposed to printing out a copy. That's why we have all these computers and it would be a big savings in the printing cost, but that's a little harder to estimate because there are still a lot of copies of things maybe, especially in the elementary where they don't have the computers and they're going to use more down that area than high schools.
Something else to be said about that, Mr. Iden, with the Google Classroom setup, the students are doing things electronically exclusively, they work on the product, turn it in, the teacher can grade it, turn it back to them and there's no papers passed at all. It all gets done exclusively in the machine and it, what I've gathered, it works really well.
Except for papers, yes?
Except for papers, there's certain, there's certain areas where it won't work quite as well, Matt, as you can see. It's why I charge things.
And they have voice-to-text capability, but it doesn't work very well yet, there's some things.
And it's, it's new, this, Chromebooks have been around three-ish years since they really, really started taking off. And it's a maturing thing, it's not something that, boom, here we go and everything's perfect.
We don't see these ever replacing the seven through 12 grade kids.
The needs are totally different.
So we're hoping we get a good trial here over the next few months before our Apple East comes to in the spring and if, if we like how they're being used and they're functional for what we need to do at an elementary level, then our intentions are that we would not replace any of those Apple computers that the students use, that they would get replaced with Chromebooks as they die out. We wouldn't sell those back either, so those will stay here and when they die out, am I correct?
Yeah.
Then we'll replace them with Chromebooks, so it could be a big thing when it comes to time for our Apple East to bring, what our hope is, but you've got to try it first, we don't want to go backwards either, so. And then, what were we going to say about even Chromebooks? Oh, the teacher, at the elementary level, the teacher's machines will stay with Macs.
And there's, there's pieces of hardware inside the classroom that just will not work without a MacBook, or not with a MacBook, now I got back to Chromebook, I don't know if words are correct. So for a teacher, it's going to have to remain the same, but for the students, we're working on making sure that they're still able to monitor the screens and work with them back and forth and do the things that they need to do and be effective as teachers as well.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm thankful we got them in now so that they can start using them and the fifth grade's really excited about it, so I think they'll be a good one for their money. We've got January, February, March, we kind of talked about that the other day at our tech meeting and three months will give us a good idea of the direction we want to take at the elementary level, so.
And it'll work for everything we need to do, testing the Chromebooks?
Yes, that's actually one of the places where they shine the best. Talking to the other districts, there's a lot of districts around that have gone in the Chromebook direction. They said that's where it really shines the best, it's a matter on the tech guys, make a couple switches and boom, the whole thing flips over and it's worth the testing instead of a bunch of extra stuff.
My kids were excited about it. I don't think kids were excited about it. Oh my gosh, your kids are fifth graders.
It was all news for you then.
Yeah.
Here to buy.
That's great. No questions for Matt? Here, Matt will move on to, thank you, we'll move on to principal reports and Andy drew the short straw.
Awesome. Just slightly sick today, so I will give our summary of this one, I suppose. On November 10th, our band went on a field trip to Ohio State and had the opportunity to go down there and see their mannequins and came back pretty impressed with that sounds like. On November 11th, we had a Veterans Day assembly here, quite a few veterans, you know, exact number, over 100.
Yeah.
Over 100 veterans were here, had breakfast with our students, got the opportunity to, we had quite the assembly really in their honor and Kirsten kind of put that on and did a great job with that, so that was something pretty special, I think, for the kids and the veterans. And the next day, our band had the opportunity to play at the War Memorial that opened up downtown, so they had a taste to be a part of that as well. On November 15th, Rick Small and 981 were here and they started off the kickoff for kids, Christmas for kids, donating toys for kids in the, in the area. We have a bin down there that's just overflowing right now, so it's great to see our kids giving back to the less fortunate area and I guess the bin is just overflowing, so it's great to see. Friday on December 2nd, our sophomores have the opportunity to go up to Fort County and they do a career exploration day, they bring all of the Fort County schools come out for one day, one morning and the kids all get to go through all, or they pick two programs, they go through two programs and kind of see what Fort County has to offer, if that's something that they're interested in doing down the road or not. So our kids got a chance to do that, this is our, this is our last Fort County as well. Last week, December 7th, the night, we had seven people that went to RCA, the Ryan Clark Academy down in Atlanta. I was one of them, fortunately I was one of them, it was amazing, you know, just absolutely mind-blowing and some of the, some of the things that are going on down there. It makes you appreciate some of the things that we're doing here as well, I think, you know, some of the steps and understand more what we're doing and, like I said, it was rejuvenating. I think the people who were, who went down there for the first time, just you can't believe all the things that are going on and really putting it to words is difficult, so it makes you appreciate what we're doing here, that much for our thing. Friday, December 9th, was also our midterms for the second quarter, it's hard to believe that we're already halfway there and again, we're not mailing home the terms, those are all online and parents can get online to Power School, whenever they need to, check that out. Coming up, just a reminder that our winter sports season's already started, you know, it's hard to believe, but you know, we've had two or three boys game, girls games already, I know archery's already started, so we've got a lot of different activities going on here already. This Friday, December 16th, we have our band and choir Christmas concert, you know, Time with the Humor. It'd be a good thing to check that out. December 20th, Mrs. Mills' class is participating in a project they call Real World, Real Money. I don't know if you guys have ever seen it, but it's a pretty cool project where the kids will research a job, you know, they find out how much they would have to make and what their monthly income would be and then they get real life problems, so whether that's a child, whether that's, they lose a job, they have to go to, you know, get cable, get funds, they start to find out how to really spend your money and stuff and it's something that's pretty neat to watch, kids start to face some real world problems, so that's coming up and something I think will be pretty neat to see. Wednesday, December 21st, our junior high choir will actually be going to the Defiance County Senior Center, kind of do some Christmas caroling up there for the senior citizens and it's again, a chance to perform. Just a reminder that on December 22nd, we'll have a two-hour dismissal for the holiday break. We'll get out a couple hours early in order to have that early dismissal schedule. January 9th, after we get back from the holiday break, we'll have the evening of the scenes will take place at Hicksville High School and that's something that is run through Mrs. Kirk's room and they kind of have the opportunity to put on some skits in short plays for the school. And just a reminder that our second quarter will end January 13th and again, we'll throw off the grades. If parents want the hard copy, they can contact the office and get the hard copy, other than that, everything is going on through Power School and online now. Call ahead.
Thank you. Thursday?
Well, I'll be speaking for Mr. Lee Stee because he's enjoying his time at sixth grade camp right now. I get to go Wednesday and Thursday when it's going to be the coldest. I'm hoping to return here at school, I sat out at bus duty today thinking, okay, my fingers are numb, okay, I need something to cover my face, my toes are cold, I am going to die at sixth grade camp this year, so.
I got my headline.
It was cold. So, last Thursday, December 8th, we held our elementary spelling bee in the Commons. We had over 80 students that were interested in participating, so this year we decided to do a pre-test and had 27 students that were in our, in our final one on December 8th. Noah Harmon was our winner, our fifth grade student Noah Harmon, and Joda Freeze was our runner-up and Ryland Fassett was our alternate. So Noah and Joda will represent Hicksville County Spelling Bee on January 24th at Earsville at 7 o'clock. We have a comment scheme coming up this Sunday, we have 500 tickets available and lots of tickets still available, so if anybody's still interested, you can contact the elementary office to go Sunday at 5 o'clock and we'll come see them. Principal's math class is Friday, right now we have over 100 participants that have worked hard to challenge themselves and learn their math facts and get to dance on the table with me. In conjunction with Christ Covering, our school has been collecting some specific food items that will go into about 120 Christmas baskets for our, some members of our community. We encouraged it to be a house competition and we have done really well, really really well, so we're collecting through Friday. That's about it, so I don't think you.
Kirsten, did, did you send an instant alert out for the comment tickets or how did you get word to your elementary?
I sent out order forms and then I did send you guys an email as well that can go home with high school students and so they could fill out the bottom and then we just attached the tickets to it, sent it over to the.
Maybe tomorrow, send a district-wide instant alert that you have plenty of tickets left because it's always great when we have lots of people there, it's fun.
Yes, and we're going to be, actually I forgot to say, we are going to honor a teacher at that as well.
Okay.
You say it's at 5 o'clock, Kate?
5 o'clock, Kate.
One minute, Sunday.
All right, then we'll move on to the Fort County report, Dan?
Yep, sure, short and sweet, the district's very thankful that the lobby passed and it is a big financial relief to the district and anyway, it was just a standard meeting with your standard stuff and we were out there in about 25 minutes, which never happens, so there's nothing else to report.
Ryan Cassidore, the building association, in last week, he said Fort County did a wonderful, wonderful job.
They have really, it really is impressive what the administration has done under the leadership of Mr. Meister and the attitude in there, it's, it's a really good thing for Fort County area, very proud of it, yeah. I think it's some awesome programs, we've got some awesome programs going on in there.
Great, any other questions for Dan, or for Mr. Countryman?
Yeah, on, on November 21st, we had our lockdown drill and with that, we involved the county and the local police and some of our students in that drill. I don't know if you noticed in the last newsletter, but I had mentioned that there, since 1958, there hadn't been any fatalities in fires, but there's been 196 school shootings in the last three years. So I think that says that perhaps we should maybe do a little more lockdown drills. Anyhow, we tried to make it meaningful, so, and it's not the only one we're going to do this year, we decided that as a team as well, but anyhow, we did the drill and then we knew that we were going to say that there was an intruder located in a certain part of the building to see if the other part of the building would evacuate and how they would do that. And so when we announced that there was an intruder in the middle school or the junior high side of the building, the elementary side, all but one room, decided to evacuate out the far doors by the playground and in less than two minutes, the first and second floor was out of the building, which was a good thing. So that was good to see that and we, I don't think we forgot anybody this time and left them, left them in their rooms. We've done that before because they're not allowed to come out of the lockdown until they're released by an administrator, so they have to actually unlock the door and be seen by an administrator or they remain in lockdown. We had several rooms on the high school side where they, by the time we got there to check their rooms, which was a very short time, they had barricaded their doors with chairs and desks, which was a good thing to see as well. So I think we made some progress with that drill in comparison to what we've done in the past, so we were pleased with that and we've got some notes that we've taken and we'll try to step that up even more the next time we do that.
Got time for a question?
Yeah.
What do you do when the kids are outside, are they all grouped together or how's that handled in case, you know, the shooter becomes outside the building?
Sure, there is a place where they're to go and I'm not going to say where that's at.
Okay, yeah.
There's a place where they are to go.
It's been addressed.
Yes, it has been addressed and they know that in the event of a real situation, they don't stop, stand outside and wait.
Okay.
They have a designated place where they're to end up. You know, in the event, you know, a lot of people have asked, they were, what if this or what if that? And I said, you know, when we do our trainings, it gives you an idea and it gives you some kind of idea of what to do in the event of something happening. In the event of something really happening, you at least have an idea, but how you react in that situation may be completely different than how you trained. You're going to do as a teacher what you think is right for those kids and if that isn't what we did in the training, then you don't do that, but you at least have an idea with the training behind you. So ultimately, there's a certain place or places where our students are to end up in the event of this happening. I'm not sure that we will ever go as far to take the kids that to those places because, I just don't think we need to advertise that, so, but yeah, we have a plan.
Okay, good. And then the only other thought I had was you were describing that, you know, when bad things happen, they always, you know, happening groups. What, what's, do you have a plan, was they have, have a drill scheduled? But the drill becomes unfortunately a real situation, do you have a way of being able to communicate that to know that it's not actually a drill anymore, it's a real life situation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, we.
I mean, has that happened or win lottery first, but.
Right, exactly, and we hope that that's always the case. At Capitol Conference, when, when we were there this fall, I attended a session where a school had an actual situation happen, happen and it was interesting to hear, which is where I got some of the ideas that I've shared with our administrators and more that we need to do even further, but it was interesting because in that particular day, there were people that evacuated the building, there was a, it was in there at lunch, which was one of our concerns before at this particular school and I was an eighth grader with a gun, who started shooting and people left the building and some of the problems they faced was traffic. There were parents there before the first responders.
Oh wow.
And then traffic was backed up for miles.
Oh yeah.
And so, you know, that's something that, that we need to talk about in our plannings. There were students that were found as far as two miles away from the school because they exited the building and just took off running, which that's fine, as long as they're safe. That, that, you know, that's what you want and we've talked to our teachers and stuff about that as well, so. Yeah, it was a, a good session, I had like three or four pages of notes, but we can't apply all those things in, at one training or you just, you lose everybody, so just keep doing them, add a little bit each time and, and hope that we never have to use them. Any other questions?
No. Good?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that's real good.
Okay. Recently, I attended my bus training for recertification, I don't know why I did that, but I did, in case this gig doesn't work out again. And.
Good planning.
Yeah, what planning I had, you never know.
We got keywords on the bus.
But the point I wanted to say here was that, you know, it made me really, the first time, I think it was because it's the first time I've went through that recertification since I've been a superintendent and had to worry about some of the things that, that as a superintendent you have to worry about, but I was really thankful that we live in our little district, in our little 40-square-mile school district and we don't have all the problems that larger districts have with, you know. And we don't have all the problems that larger districts have with, you know, I don't know how many buses, some of them have like lots. But, you know, when they have to deal with four-lane highways and three-lane highways and the rules for buses that apply for that. And the interesting thing about all of it was the number of people. I think they said there was 4,500 reportings per day of people passing buses when their arms are out.
Across the country is.
In Ohio.
In Ohio.
Per day.
Forty-five hundred?
Forty-five hundred. I'm sure that, I'm sure that was the number that they said. I found that astonishing too.
Yeah, by the counties, that's a lot.
Yeah, it is a lot, but think of the number of buses. And a lot of it is at those four-lane highways. If it's a three-lane highway, everybody's required to stop. If it's a four-lane highway, the farthest lane is not. I can't imagine unloading, unloading anyone off of a four-lane highway.
Well, how many people, I mean, I did not know that. How many people know that on a four-lane highway, three lanes have to stop, the other lane can move?
Well, here's one that you won't know either, that'll blow you away. And I know as a bus driver, I'm supposed to agree with this, and frankly, I don't. If a, if a school bus's arm malfunctions and doesn't work, you know, the bus driver doesn't realize it at the time, it is against the law for anyone to pass a stopped bus. So even if you knew it didn't work, as a bus driver, what you should do is go back to the bus bar and get a different bus. Because you can go and pick up kids the rest of your route and not use your arm or lights. And it is illegal.
Not using your lights.
It is illegal for someone to pass your bus. And I don't think that's fair to the, to the drivers. That's why I'm like, oh, thank you, Lord.
If you aren't polite, that's really part of it.
Yeah, so you have the lights on.
It is illegal to pass a stopped bus, no matter what. If they're stopped, pick up children. It's illegal to pass the bus. I found that incredible. Anyhow, I just was really thankful for our little district. We've had people that have passed arms before too. And, you know, we report it when, you know, because it just can't happen and that can't happen. So that's just all I wanted to say on that. I attended our monthly superintendent meeting of the ESC, as I always do. And they talked a little bit about our biennial budget, so we're not still near thunder. And it was mentioned that Ohio sales tax and income tax have both generated less revenue than they had projected and that they are not predicting it to be a rosy budget. And that should be ready by the end of January. So we'll see what's headed our way as far as the budget. Also, there's been a little confusion in the number of adults needed in a preschool classroom. We found out at the, at my meeting, and Kirsten, this will be interesting to you, that they're changing that up a little bit. It'll all be revised in 2017 and cleared up so that it's clarified. But one example of what they were saying is that a preschool room, preschool, so I'm not talking our kindergarten readiness, I'm talking our preschool rooms, that the adult-to-child ratio is going to be one to six for all children in the classroom with or without disabilities. If there are 13, they will need three adults.
Those are new rules?
Headed our way.
Yeah. Currently.
We have, how many in each one of our sessions? We have 16, I think.
16 with one missing.
Two.
Two A's.
Two. But don't we have three in the one session?
We do in the morning session right now. But I mean, some of these children are like three-year-olds, non-verbal screaming all of the time on top of the 16 children, and some of them are also three-year-olds.
There's a maximum, if I'm not mistaken, in reading, reviewing my notes today from what they told us at the meeting, there's a maximum of eight allowable children with disabilities in each classroom. And then you can have up to eight typicals. But that is 16 kids, which requires three adults whenever this goes into effect, regardless of their need. So that was.
The same, I think right now we have three or four that are pretty needy children, two that are starting to get in there.
So the ESC is going to jump up the bill on us because they're all employed by them, correct?
They would correct, that is correct. Yeah. And, you know, it used to be here at Hicksville, in my day even, Ben, even when, since we moved out here, but we had some students from Central Local in our preschool unit. And so some of that cost was shared with them. But the need is so great in Hicksville that it's completely filled by Hicksville people. Does Central Local have a preschool unit?
Yes.
So they've since started their own.
Are we able to accommodate everyone that's being, we will turn any of that away?
No, there's a waiting list. Okay. So we'll see how that plays out. And then some good news, the ESC will be deducting approximately $32,000 from our bill. They recently paid their facilities off and they also had an excess amount, I'm not exactly sure I'm explaining this exactly right, but they had an excess amount. And so they're dividing that amongst the districts that they serve based on a five-year average of their use.
Excellent.
Yeah, so the refunds range anywhere from $12,000 to $90,000, I think, depending on how much the district used them. And we are getting $32,000, so a little over $32,000. So that's a good thing.
That's good.
One other item is our college credit plus fees. And I wanted to share that Owens State, Northwest State, Owens and Northwest State Community Colleges, the credit hour rate is $41.50 per hour for any of our kids that take a class there. Defiance College is $130 an hour and Bowling Green would be $150 an hour. So the two community colleges have went down to the near minimum of what they're allowed to charge. And the other two, and they're not required to do that. So I commend Northwest State and Owens for doing that because that's where most of our kids go. But we do have, I don't know how many, but we have some that go to Defiance as well. So yeah, those cost a little bit more. Just want to share that with you.
How many different, so is there just four schools? Because I remember you had said that they could pick any school they wanted.
They can pick any school in the state of Ohio.
And I mean, do we have any, I mean, I would have thought, you know, Ohio State or something like that with Toledo, but those are just the four that was picked. So that's good.
That's the four we're, well, that's the four I'm reporting.
Okay.
Well, and part of it has to do with the college has to be like that. Like if there's a fourth junior or something, Ohio State might not accept you. See if we can have classes, do I mean?
Yeah.
But it's interesting to see how the prices vary. And in fact, Larry, is it Larry Brown? Who's his superintendent? I forgive me for that. It's another superintendent that actually spearheads going out to all these different colleges and negotiates with them the cost. And Northwest State did a presentation at our, I believe it was our September meeting. And the cost was not reduced at all, even in Northwest State. So how long it's going to stay at the $41.50, I don't know. But I don't anticipate that staying that way for a long time into the future. So he was able to get it down for this year. And that is what I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Patrick? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed? Motion, please.
I'll second.
Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Minutes on financials. Motion? And second. Thank you, Dan. All right, everybody had a chance to read over the minutes from the regular board meeting. There was a push to change on those just because of a consent.
Sorry, Steph. Had to turn again.
I'm going to bring a dumb cap. All right, Treasurers' Report, please.
I just had a couple of things. In the November foundation payment were down. I made mention of it in my Treasurers' Update that that was due to some ABM or enrollment numbers that we had corrected. Matt and I kind of talked about it. Those monies will be coming back around and I think after the corrections were made and then November's middle was made, then the December numbers look right in their, in their, where they were because I was starting to panic there for a little bit. Let's see, on security cameras, we have in the, in the packet, a recommendation authorizing the bid for the upgrade in security cameras. And just as a little FYI, as it says in here, the school band is in pretty bad shape. We have put that out of service so that it's no longer going to be used for transportation of staff or students or athletes in its current condition.
But we're leaving a park till July.
Yeah, we're not doing, we're not going to purchase anything. We'll wait and hold on that one.
So it's just not being used, it'll all be traded in then?
No, we're not doing anything.
It will be traded in when we do do something, but right now it's just our job back.
Probably parked.
Probably parked.
There was also in your packet, a contract for Sammy Stomp. And that is basically just to, we do a cash basis is how we provide our financials, but they take the information that I have and put it into like a Gatsby format that they'll accept. So it'd be $2,200 a year for three years is the cost of that. And that's about all I have. Anybody have any questions?
I think you just got to ask for loans that you have loans a year.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Did they give any reason to keep touching on the history for you? Did they give any reason why the taxes down?
Oh, the income tax?
Yeah, the income tax across the state. I just find that puzzling, I guess.
It's.
It's soon to be the opposite.
Yeah, exactly. The generated less revenue, the Ohio sales tax and income tax have both generated less revenue than had been projected.
Unless they projected really high.
In the matter of four, I didn't, they didn't say why, they just said.
But you saw the last, our last meeting, you saw our locals.
Yeah, our local tax was down.
Was down too, which, which.
Kind of seemed interesting.
Yeah, I'm shocked because just knowing some of the things that are going on business wise in the town.
Yeah, everything looks good. It looks sane, consistent.
Employers are adding people.
Well, that's one of the things that they, in our Capitol Conference, in one of the classes that I went to, they did say sales tax and income tax were down statewide about 2%. And they also mentioned that state jobs were lost over the last two months. So it was noted even there that, and that it really gives us a reason why that they did note it. And it's also mentioned that having a recession, not the one projected one, but did have a 4% recession every time.
And I haven't heard anything about the biannual budget as of yet, but I have a meeting at the end of, I think this week, with the county treasurers or with the ESC treasurers, we have a monthly meeting also. So I'm sure that'll be addressed there.
Concerning.
It is concerning.
Puzzling.
But no, when I got that information last month, I was kind of like.
It's like, what was the percentage that was down?
It was down like 30.
I was going to say.
It was down pretty a bit.
But they determined that was because of some.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Information that was not put in quite right. And we've since corrected that, so we'll.
That was the foundation payment. She's talking income tax.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Which farm income tax was, our income, income was down last year. You know, this year, yeah, this, this year versus other years. So and that is a significant part of our, of our local economy.
Blame it farmers.
Oh, no, let's not do that. Let's not do that. I have an uncle who loves me, but he will not like that. Thank you very much. Okay? Any other commentary on the Treasurers' Report?
Okay. Blaming the weather. Blaming the weather.
We will blame the weather.
Don't put that down.
So.
See that grin he's got on his face over there?
We will accept the following donations. $100 from an anonymous donor for sixth grade camp, maybe for extra hand warmers. $300 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for girls' basketball. $486 from Danielle Van Hatta for wrestling. And $1,000 from Hicksville Athletic Boosters for the class of 2018. And that's all having to do with concessions that they took. Any commentary? Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And better?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. And on to employment certified staff. I need a motion, please.
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2016-2017 school year. And please note that we are going to try next year to move supplementals as many as we can at the beginning of the year.
This bothers me and I'll just leave that at that. And hopefully I have this corrected next year. But there should be two times a year when we approve stuff from the supplemental contracts and that's going to be either May or June. And then again in like maybe November or December. But it was just an oversight. It happens every year and it's going to happen with a lot of supplementals. But we do have a plan and we're going to try to take care of this one, doesn't happen again.
So we have Mike Blue for co-high school student council advisor, Robyn Chamberlain for extra vocal duties, Joy Geiger, foreign language club advisor, Elaine Gurkin, co-high school student council advisor and drama club advisor, Zett Kohlmeier for extra band, pet band for the winter, Kathy Lani, newspaper advisor, quiz bowl advisor, science fair advisor and high school yearbook advisor, because, you know, everybody needs a little extra to do, Paul Payne, science club advisor, Jared Rosebrock, elementary student council advisor, and Tony Tier for boys mini aces basketball coach. Questions? No, roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to employment of classified staff. Motion, please. Recommend to approve the resignation from Sarah Miller as matmaid advisor effective November 17, 2016, which was in your packet. Recommend to approve a $100 per occurrence stipend to Eric Bassett for snow removal during non-school hours. Kept him busy over the weekend, I'm sure. Recommend to approve the following as classified substitutes for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year pending certification and background check. Jennifer Bowman, Nathan Farrell, Julie Hook, Marion Sterheim, Jerika Stephens, Carrie Bowles. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2016-2017 school year. Shelley Commisso for matmaid advisor, Cara Johns, co-mini aces girls' basketball coach, James Miller, mini aces wrestling coach, Pam Slattery, elementary yearbook advisor, and Bob Weatherhead, co-mini aces girls' basketball coach. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And better?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Services and agreements. Motion, please. Thank you. So we have a resolution to pass. It's about complimentary sport passes for the staff.
And this was recommended by our Diola representative just to have approved. And it's kind of a double thing because you already are approving some of this information when you approve the ticket prices. And some of that information is included at the end of the ticket prices sheets that you got in the fall are included in here. But it was recommended that we just approve this.
Discussion. Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Iden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And better?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes 5-0. I need a motion for.
I'll move.
Thank you. And a second, please. To recommend to approve an enterprise zone agreement between Defiance County and Gordon Creek Granite, effective December of 2016, and waiver of notice agreement for said agreement, which is what we had our speaker about. Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Need a motion to move on? Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Your second, and I'm sorry. Recommend to approve bid from Course and Fire and Security to upgrade security camera system. The estimated cost is eighty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Recommend to approve a cash basis proposal with Sammy Alston and company. This proposal will include the preparation of the district's cash basis annual report, consistent with the presentation requirements of Gatsby. Recommend to approve the annual OSBA membership dues from January 2017 to December of 2017. Recommend to approve the annual OSBA briefcase electronic copy subscription, and recommend to approve the annual school management news electronic copy subscription. Discussion. All right, roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Moving on to other business. Thank you, Jen. And a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Recommend to extend recognition and congratulations to Robin Chamberlain, Brent Souffol, a host of volunteers, and the casting crew of the elementary musical The Aristocats and 101 Dalmatians, their outstanding performances on November eighteenth, 2016, through November nineteenth of 2016. Recommend to approve a six-day trip for foreign language students to Puerto Rico. The estimated dates of travel are June fifteenth, 2017, to June twentieth, 2017. And a recommendation to approve the newer revised Board of Education bylaws and policies, which we all looked over electronically. Okay? Any discussion?
Robin, you did a nice job with the, with the play. That was really good. You and obviously everybody else, but you're the one here, so.
I just apologize, but I did not have that on the elementary side, but it was-
Blame Travis. Just blame Travis, around here.
It was definitely fun to watch. The trip, is this in addition to their Europe trip, or is this-
Yes, no. Mrs. Geiger does hers, and then Mrs. Liddell's, and it's only if kids want to go, it's not obviously required.
I think it's one thing.
Yeah, it is, I thought that too, Jenny, and I also thought that, you know, maybe it was a little longer planning time might be advantageous, so hopefully she has some interest, but we'll see. It's her first time, so we'll see.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
And better?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion here. Thank you, Jen. I'll second. Thank you, Jen. So, we need to recommend to approve Monday, January ninth, at 2017, at six PM. As the date and time, I'm assuming we're just going to do it right before our regular board meeting, so I said six there, okay? And we have to appoint someone as president pro tempore.
I nominate Steph Mazer.
You have a second. Anybody opposed to that?
She said, it's going to be at six o'clock, or?
That's always right before a regular meeting. Takes one minute.
Oh, just for the organization, I'm sorry.
Just the organizational meeting, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then, do we have any unannounced guests who wish to?
And then we're going to do our regular.
We have, we have a paper to flip, yep. Okay, so, we will not be going into executive session. I do need a motion to adjourn so we can talk about our next meeting.
I got one thing to discuss.
Oh, that's right, Jenny, I'm sorry, even had it out here.
And I got a question too, our work session is when?
Our work stage session is going to be immediately after our next regulars board meeting.
On the night.
On the night, so it'll be kind of a longer day for us.
I don't anticipate a lot on the board agenda, so that should, with the organizational meeting and the agenda, I'm thinking we should be done easily by seven. We spend a couple hours at the most then, on our work session, like we typically do, then we're done by nine, and it's all in one day, as opposed to a-
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, I let the- Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, great.
And thank you, I did get all of your ideas for the agenda, so I appreciate you responding.
Just wanted to make sure, this card, I mean, it's tough in two hours to do it all, especially if there are less than a couple ideas, so.
That's all right, I'll crack the timer, I'm okay with that.
Still, it is, it's just a job, because we've lots of-
And you're right, there is a lot.
No, I think honestly, you know, if this works out well, I don't know if there are, is there a limit to how long this work session's done? If this works out well, I mean, I'm not opposed to, you know, maybe fine-tuning the list or something, and doing one a quarter even, you know, if you don't spend the whole time, I think it'd be beneficial than-
Hey, you know, once a quarter, you spend forty-five minutes after a board meeting or something, you know, while you're already here.
Yeah, exactly.
I know it's hard to do sometimes, I know we used to meet on Saturday mornings once, but it wasn't bad, you know? It was, as long as you could find a date that was open for everybody, it was, you got a lot done, and it wasn't, it was relaxing.
Items, food?
Yeah. We can do that too, but I think, I think if, you know, maybe we did a lesser, maybe more often, it might be more beneficial than trying to do all in-
We'd probably stay more on point.
I think so too, Jenny.
And we could definitely shorten the items on the agenda if we did that.
I have one item of discussion for the board. No decision has to be made tonight, as for our January meeting, of concerns for County and the representative of the Ford County. Three years ago, the state changed how that was done. Before, it could be anyone appointed from the board, and it was a two-year term. Since then, you know, they put qualifications in, and I can list all the qualifications alongside that year, which either you got to be a business owner, or you got to be in human resources. You have to somehow be associated, you know, head of a county, CPA, something along those lines, to now be able to serve on the board at your Ford County school.
Not necessarily a board member.
That's correct, it no longer has to be a board member. It just has to be somebody from your community that the board delegates to do that. At the same time, they changed the terms. It was a two-year term, it is now a three-year term, which throws it out of sync also with how our other elections are for the, for the board, you know, for the board. So, I am not planning on rerunning next year as a Hicksville board member. But you can do two terms consecutively, two three-year terms consecutively on any, on any vocational board or career center boards. And then at the very minimum, you have to take one three-year term off before you can go, you could go back on. And, and that's a good thing, because in all honesty, there's some people that have been on that board for twenty years, and some of them are doing really good, but twenty years is too long. So, it's, to me, it's a good thing that they did, but the position would still report back to this board, it's still a responsibility of this board for the community. But I, I have one three-year term that I would be eligible left to do, I would like to do it, but I want you guys to understand that I'd submit a report to, to, to someone on the board, the president of the board, I necessarily wouldn't be here every meeting, but I'm not going to be on the Hicksville school board for two of those three years. So, I just wanted to, and if not, that's perfectly okay, we just need to appoint somebody next month for that position. We can have that discussion. That's an organizational meeting, right? Right, that's what we'll do that.
Yeah, when we talk about who does the other.
Yeah, that's one we'll do, it just, it needs to be discussed now, so that there's, there's nothing official done tonight. Just wanted to get what your guys' feelings was, if you're okay with that, if you want someone else to do it, because I'm not going to be on the board after next year. I'm completely fine with you doing it.
I am too, I mean, you went there, you know what's better than the rest of us.
I think, you know, it's the same as I feel about the boards here. Your first term, you spend the majority of that really on how the board functions and what it does. Your second term, you really do a lot of good, or you can be really involved with the board, especially the latter part of your first term. So, I, I feel that way, and I like it, it was there, and we got some good things, projects in the way, and go on, and I'll remind you, I'm only three years old.
And you answered my question, I just wondered about the communication, that you said you would like-
Yeah, that would be a report, I would say to, that's up to you guys, but I would say that is to the president of the board.
And just to read that, okay. Other thoughts? Looks like we're all okay with that, just wondering.
That way I can tell, I have a meeting Thursday, I can tell, probably won't be a change.
About a replacement, yeah. The board makeup will be. Any other discussion questions? None of you guys have anything to say? Not going into executive session, we do need a motion for adjournment. Okay, so we are going to adjourn this meeting until the next board meeting to be held Monday, January nineteenth, immediately after the organizational meeting.
But ninth, right?
Ninth, what did I say?
Nineteenth.
Oh, no, ninth. Monday, January ninth, at six.
Is her husband coming out of there?
Okay, anyway, so it'll be immediately after our organizational board meeting, and then, of course, after that, we will have our nice little work session. Commentary.
None, thank you.
All right. Throw in a poll, which person has the best? Seven oh one. Roll call, please. Carrier?
Yes.
Ayden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Better? Motion passes five zero. I'll see you all on January ninth.